All right, I'm going to call the Marine City Commission meeting for November 15th, 2018 to order. I'd like to have, we're going to have a prayer by Pastor Dorrell first, and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I'm still serving as vacancy pastor for Living Faith Lutheran Church. We have repurposed Ward Catrelle, and that's our present church location. And I'm interim while we're waiting for, and we seem to be calling and calling, and everybody likes the area, maybe they just don't like us, I'm not sure. I don't think that's it, but so far we haven't been able to fill it. But we do bring a word of encouragement to you, the City Commission, and a prayer blessing for you. Public service, it seems to me, is rewarding. You, I served on our Board of Review for Columbus Township for, I don't know, seven, eight years. There were some days when I wore my clerical collar at work on our Board of Review. It's much easier to deal with people when they're wearing a clerical collar than not. But anyway, you served community, and I've watched, I've been over here a number of years, so I've watched the community change and positive, and that's one of the things that we're able to say to potential pastors who are coming here. Go and see what's happening, and look what's taking place. And this is a place that, I think five, six years ago, one wondered, and now I think a dying community is alive. I don't think it was dying then, it just looked like it. So, that's a good thing. And it can also be, public service can also be at times a little discouraging, a little burdensome at times, you know, not, everybody is happy and excited about every decision that is made, and we have to just accept the fact that that's the way it will be. That's the way it will be. And yet, even that, we're thankful for, that kind of input, that people care enough to come and share, and to make some of their needs known. Living Faith is a congregation that's here for the long haul, and to that end, we invite you to bow your heads for prayer this night. Heavenly Father, we continue to pray for this community and for the leadership of this community. In your holy word, you have set up those vocations, those stations in life that should exist. There is marriage between husband and wife, there is the family, and you have put in place the idea of good government. We thank you, Lord, for those who are charged with the daily order of this community. We place in your caring hands the mayor, the commissioners of Marine City, but especially the city manager, the clerk, and treasurer, and various departments, and those workers. May they find joy in their daily service, joy in watching a community that they have an opportunity to work with, with people. May they find joy in continuing to serve this place and for the betterment of all people. We pray, Lord, that you will grant them that ability to serve with honesty, with integrity. Grant them the ability to have wisdom and understanding when they need to make tough decisions. May it be for the welfare of all. Place your protecting hand over those in this community, our police and fire departments, those individuals who willingly serve, sometimes putting their life on the line, stepping into harm's way, for the good of others and for the good of this community. But we also pray your blessings upon the daily work of those in our community who are charged with the continued education of the youth, be with our schools. We pray blessings upon groups like Helping Hands and the food pantry at Holy Cross that meet the needs, and sometimes those needs of individuals within the community. We pray for your blessings also as we look about the community and see the new people who are coming in, but that also that the old, and people who have been here, might find it a place of welcoming and a place for people to grow and to raise their families. As we gather on this Thanksgiving, in this Thanksgiving weekend next week, we pray for blessings as we receive our daily bread, all those things that provide for our daily life. And, Lord, as we also pray for the spiritual communities within this community, that they might speak your word of truth, because through that word of truth, we realize what you have said, that life is much more than food and bread and drink, and through your son, you have given us healing and wholeness, forgiveness and life. We pray all of these things in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Van Bosh is absent this evening. Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen.
Here.
Commissioner Perkaman.
Here.
May I have a motion to excuse the mayor?
Make a motion to excuse the mayor?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, he's excused. All right, I need a motion to receive the communications. We have the Blue Meets Green Local Regional Project Inventory, the Community Foundation Update, Pension Board Minutes, July 31st, 2018, Pension and Retire Healthcare Meeting Minutes, July 31st, 2018, Zoning Board of Appeals, August 1st, 2018, the daily activity reports, and the Marine City Area Fire Authority. I have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we accept communications items A through G as presented.
Support.
I have a motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now it's time for a public comment. Anyone in attendance, welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes. Anybody? Bill?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Bill Greatop, I live at 9200 North River Road. I'm your county commissioner, and this is one of the few occasions I get to come here. We do this every single year. You guys meet first and third Thursdays, so does the County Commission, and so I don't get up here as often as I would like to. I make a motion every year that you guys change your meeting, but nobody's paying attention to what I say, so I get here when I can. I do watch, I do talk to a lot of people that are on the commission, I talk to the city manager all the time, I talk to Chris a lot. Bud Babcheck is at every meeting, and he fills me on exactly what's going on, so I keep a real close eye on what's happening around here, and it's good stuff. Everything I'm hearing is really, really good, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing up here. Jacob, congratulations on a hard fought campaign, nice job. If you don't know, Jacob was one of my students back in second grade. So, I'll tell you some of the stories, so I'll give you one a year, I'll give you a story about him once a year, none this year. Wendy, congratulations to you, I know you had a choice to make, you could have served the two, or you grabbed the four, you grabbed the four, I think that's a, it shows a lot of integrity, I like that. And Cheryl, to you too, nice campaign, nice way to go. One of the things that I noticed about Cheryl, during her campaign, she talked about a marina. Everybody talks about marinas, and they're great, and they're wonderful, and they bring a lot of business to your town, and I would love to see that. It's just one of those things that is very difficult, it takes a lot of money to put one together, and once you have it together, it takes a lot of money to keep it going, but it's a great idea, and with the downtown that you guys have right now, anybody that was to come into that Bell River area and tie up at a marina, whether they spent the night or just the day, would certainly go into town. And I believe your restaurant would be the closest to the marina, just so happens, I like that.
Just saying.
Good thinking on your part. And I also passed out my cards to everybody, if you have any questions, my cellphone is on there, it rings four or five hours a day, and my email, I answer periodically, so that's on there also. And then, also, the brochure that I gave you is on the Blue Ace for St. Clair County. You're going to see a little bit more of that coming in the near future, and you guys have a perfect spot to take off in kayak to head up the Bell River. And you can also go out into the big water, and we would really like to see somewhere along the lines a connection made. We're working in Algonquin on that right now, if you guys could get onboard, St. Clair already has a place, Marysville can launch up there, Port Yarn can launch, and a lot of people will come down, and you can just pick a spot and pull in, and be able to pull out in a safe environment like you could on the Bell River, or back in the Marine City dredge cut in Algonquin. So, those are things that we're looking at, they're long-term, but we're looking at those types of things, so keep that in mind. I won't, I won't go on, unlike the pastor, probably, he told me he gets paid by the, by the word, did you say, pastor?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to cut mine a little short before that bell goes off, but I just wanted to say hello, and wish everybody a good, happy Thanksgiving and a holiday season. Continue the good work, I could see, I've met everybody, I think I know everybody that's on this board right now in one way or another. I see really good things for this board, and good things for Marine City, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Terry Avery. I reside at 407 Westminster Street. I want to congratulate the board, the commission, and wish them well. We just heard how good things have gone in the last five years. You have this chance to carry that momentum along and make this a better city to live in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe?
Good evening, I'm Joe Moran, 710 Pleasant Street. I'd also like to welcome the new commission members. What is this, the class of 2026 or something like that? So, guys are in for the long haul, and good luck with that. I also think a rounding congratulations is due to Ms. Baxter and her voter, registration voter group, they did a marvelous job. We had, I just found out, for a midterm election, we had a record turnout, and it was just below the record turnout we had for a presidential election, so congratulations to Marine City and all those folks that came out to vote. However, I'm still pretty disgusted because about 50% of our registered voters stayed home from the polls again, and that has an impact on our city, as we'll see here. Our village lost, and before people start waving a flag and say, oh, we have a mandate based on our voter turnout, our village was defeated by only about 24% of the registered voters in this town. When you think about that, that's one person out of four that is making decisions about how this town moves forward into the future. It affects not only your vehicle and your quality of life if you live on one of those streets, but somebody coming along that would like to open a business, bring a business to Marine City, or buy a home in Marine City, is going to look at the conditions of our roads and say, okay. Second thing that we have to look out for is the passage of Proposition 1. I know it was a statewide proposition, there wasn't a heck of a lot we could do about it, but lest we start thinking that we now have a mandate in Marine City to sell recreational marijuana, you need to think that fewer than a third of the voters in this town voted for that particular proposition. So, when you give thought to, and you need to do it soon because of the timing, when you give thought to whether or not you want to open Marine City up to those sales, you need to think about the fact that two-thirds of the people in this town either didn't vote for it at all, or voted against it. The pros and cons of that issue are very tricky, you need to look at it very carefully and make sure there is indeed a substantial benefit for Marine City in inviting that into the community. And I would suggest that probably as a, as a short-term measure, you vote not to have them come into the city until such time as you've really worked out all the nuts and bolts, and then you can always change that proposition later. Okay, so once again, congratulations to you new folks, Chris and your team, congratulations, and to all of those that did come out and vote, God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Michael Frank, 525 Woodware Street. Ditto to a lot of what the other people up here are saying. Congratulations, welcome to all the new commissioner members. Hope you guys know anything I may have said on social media, whatever, nothing personal. You know, I'm a passionate guy, I love Marine City, I grew up here, I've lived here 25 years. So, you know, it's part of that, it's just, it's just my passion coming out, all right? You know, two years ago, Dave Simpson, you know, I was kind of against him running and being reelected, and I messaged him on Facebook after he won, you know, the same thing I'm saying now, congratulations and all that, and he messaged back, you know, no worries, it's all part of the process. And, you know, that's, it's really, that'll stick with me, because it was cool to hear, it really was, because at the end of the day, it is, it's just a process, and at the end, we all got to live here together still, and the chances of us actually working together in the future. So, you know, it's in our benefit to work together and do whatever we can to have what's best for this town, and that's, I think, what we all want. Thanks.
Anybody else? I meant to ask you, Chris, didn't you want to swear everybody in? When do you want to do that?
We did it already beforehand.
Oh, did you? Okay, sorry, I missed it.
Yeah.
All right, I need a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda, submit it.
Need support?
Support.
Okay, I got a motion, any changes, deletions, additions, comments? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the regular minute, meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from November 1st, 2018.
Support.
Got a motion to support, anybody have any comments or changes, or does everything look okay?
Everything looks, everything looks okay.
It was a big one.
It was a big one.
Yeah, if there's no issues, then, I mean, all those in favor of approving them, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. I need a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the closed minutes, that were, what, August?
November.
November 1st, 2018.
Support.
Okay, got a motion, and there's really not a whole lot to discuss here, so all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. All right, consent agenda, the only thing we have on here is the special event for the Merry Time Christmas, which will be December 1st, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., all day throughout the city. So, I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the Merry Time Christmas special event as, permit as presented.
Need support?
Support.
Any discussion? If not, need a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkaman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
It's short tonight.
I know.
All right, we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll go on to 10, elect the mayor pro temp, so I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to elect Commissioner Hendricks as our mayor pro temp.
Support.
Got a motion to support, any other discussion? Appreciate it. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Thank you. All right, so we got board appointments, this is the next fun part, so this is, some of you are on boards as a, just a person in the community, and with all the people going out, now we have to appoint members from our board onto these boards. So, the first one's going to be the planning commission, and I know Bill's on there, and you were on there as the...
Just as a member.
As a resident, okay. So...
If anyone expresses interest or wants to serve on that?
Or does Bill just keep that?
The mayor asked me to stay on that one, I had one or the other, either ZBA or the planning, and the mayor asked me to stay on the planning.
Okay, so, we need a motion, if that's all right with everybody else, for Bill to stay on there with his experience, we need a motion to appoint.
I make a motion to appoint Bill Claussen to the planning commission.
Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? There you go, Bill, another board. Okay, now we move on to the zoning board of appeals. So, you are on there as a resident.
Mm-hmm.
You want to stay on there as a, okay.
Yes.
So, can we get a motion for Cheryl?
I make a motion for Commissioner Perkaman to be on the zoning board of appeals.
Support.
Okay, got a motion to support, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, done. Okay, so now we need two commissioners, so you need two commissioners and one alternate commissioner?
Correct.
And who was on there, is the mayor still on there?
The mayor and, I believe, Bill was on it?
Jim Turner.
Jim Turner.
The mayor and Jim Turner.
Did we have an alternate?
We did not, we, we did not have one.
Who's vacant?
Is the mayor staying on?
We can say so.
I, I don't know that he expressed any interest. One thing to take into consideration with the pension board, though, is that we're potentially looking to restructure it.
Yeah.
And downsize from a seven-member board to a five-member board. In that scenario, we would only need one commissioner and one alternate for the commissioner.
So, what do you want to do now? Go with the three until we, until you do that, or?
I would like probably at least two, we could hold off on the alternate.
Okay, so you don't know if, so yes, we could still leave Dave on there. He who doesn't show to the meeting gets appointed, you know how that goes.
I, I don't think that he would object, but he did not express any...
Well, if we put two on, then eventually he'll, you know, probably, if we skinny it down to one...
I think we talked about mine, and I, there's a conflict there, so...
Correct.
Because you're a...
Retired.
Retiree, yeah.
Right.
Okay, anybody else want this one? Would you like to petition for?
This is a board that actually meets at 4:00 in the afternoon.
4:30.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's going to...
Quarterly.
All right, is that an issue for anybody?
I can, if Jacob doesn't want to do it, I'll do it.
I'm going to need two, or at least one and an alternate, so, you want to do it?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so I need a motion for Wendy to be, let's make her the one commissioner.
Okay.
I'll be the alternate if you need it.
Okay, so let's do, one at a time, let's do the, a motion for Wendy first.
I'll make a motion to put Wendy on the pension board.
I'll support that, I'll do that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, I need a motion for the alternate.
I will make a motion for Jacob Bryson to be the alternate commissioner for the pension board.
I'll support that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So, here's the fun one, who wants to be the SEMCOG rep?
I, I can be the alternate, I can't be the primary member, because there has to be an elected official. Generally, their meetings are quarterly down in Detroit, it's not something in the past that's been attended on a regular basis, so you don't necessarily need to feel the pressing need to attend these meetings, and as I said, I can always go as the alternate.
Yep, don't they send us a lot of literature, too, to the, to the city?
They do, we're SEMCOG members, so everybody usually gets that information.
So, you get the books and everything, so...
Anybody interested?
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Well, I need a motion for that one, quick.
Before I change my mind.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to have Wendy on the committee for the SEMCOG.
I'll support that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 You need a motion for the alternate as well.
Oh, I need a motion for Elaine as an alternate.
Okay, I make a motion for Elaine Levin to be our alternate for SEMCOG.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 There we go.
Done.
Done that, okay. Next one we have is the Friends of City Hall, the library sign, and what they're asking us for is, they're going to put in a new sign out front, electronic one, in front of the library, and they want to, us to waive the permit fees, which is normal since we own the building. So, we have $100 for the building permit, 75 for the application, and 75 for the inspection.
Yeah, I'm not quite sure where they got this information for their letter, I did speak with Susan earlier today regarding this. They actually came in and already paid the $100 for the building permit, it's all that would be required, so if you approve this, we would reimburse Phillips Lighting for that application fee.
So, you just need the $100 permit, you don't need the other two? Okay, so we need a motion to waive the $100 building permit fee.
I make a motion that we waive the $100 building permit fee for the Friends of Library, the Friends of Marine City Library digital sign.
Support.
Got a motion and support, any discussion, any questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. All right, moving right along. Next thing we have is the Metro Act Permit Application, I need a motion to approve, and then we'll discuss.
I make a motion that we approve the 123net Metro Act Permit Application.
Support.
Got a motion and support, discussion, can you explain this one to everybody?
Yeah, sure, so this is an application that we received from 123net to put fiber optic in the right of way. This is actually a state regulated form, an application that requires a timely response by the municipality in which it's served. Information was provided in the packets, we didn't do the complete application because there is a pretty voluminous amount of information. The area that they're looking to actually put something called dark fiber, it's not something that is going to be activated by them, it, in essence, would be something that would either be purchased or leased to somebody else. It's a very small area on King Road, pretty much between 26 Mile and DeGurcy. We do get Metro Act permit money from the providers, primarily Comcast in the city. Currently, that's about $14,000 a year that we get, this would be a little tiny bump in the revenue, I wouldn't anticipate much more than probably $100 a year for this. They're just seeking approval of their application for this.
It's that little bitty piece, that's it?
Yes, that's it. And as I said, it's dark fiber, it's not like Comcast coming in and directly providing service, this is someone that goes and does the work, puts it in, and either resells it or leases it.
Okay, any other questions?
So, there's no other fiber there or lines of any kind right now?
Not that I'm aware of.
One more discussion?
How did they choose that site?
They must have determined that there was some need. All of these companies have kind of proprietary information regarding clients, customers, and build-outs, so generally, it's something that they don't really share the information about what their plans are and who they plan on serving.
Anything else? Roll call.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Claussen.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkaman.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we can move on to the SEC Metro Planning Strategic Planning Session Proposal, I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the SEC Metro Planning Strategic Planning Session Proposal.
Support.
Got a motion and support, discussion, so you want to explain this, too?
Yep. So, as you may or may not know, especially with some new commissioners here, the role of commission is really to set policy and the direction for commission to go. This is a proposal from the county planning for, in essence, a strategic plan, goal-setting session. This is something that really has not been done since I've been here, and I think as a board, we've maybe lacked clear direction... And I think as a board, we've maybe lacked clear direction, working together and moving forward, and prioritizing projects, things that we want to get taken care of. At our last meeting regarding this, we did talk a little bit about tying the managers' evaluation to some of the goals that would potentially come out of something like this. What it is, is that we would get a survey from commission about some of your goals and objectives for the community, as you being commissioners. We would get information from our department heads about things that they feel are important, that need to be done in the community. And then we would come together with the information and have a special meeting where we can discuss all of this information and work towards our goals for the next couple of years. In essence, it's similar to a master plan, but not focusing on, like, planning and zoning of the community. This is focusing on things that we will be doing next for the community to move it forward. Some of the things include, for example, economic development. Is that something that we wanna focus on? Maybe we wanna start advertising. We wanna start finding people that can come to our community and fill some of the vacancies. Talking about recreational marijuana, is that something that we potentially want to allow facilities and sales establishments in our community? Talking about the roads, we had the infrastructure group, and obviously, that merits quite a bit of discussion. Prioritizing our goals is going to be, I think, one of the most challenging things because there's not a lack of goals and things that we can see that could be done. But obviously, you have to balance that with revenue. That's an important part of the goal-setting here, is that, you know, we need to talk about revenue. It's been mentioned many times about where can we get more revenue. So that's something that we'll need to discuss as a component of this as well. One of the primary things of how I think we would kickstart this would be to do facility tours. Whether we approve this or not, that is something that we want to do, in particular with all the commissioners, so that you can get a good idea of all of our resources, buildings, conditions, grounds, things like that. So when we do talk about things at meetings or have requests for equipment, repairs, something like that, you're a little bit more familiar about that. So with that being said, just looking for a motion to approve the Metropolitan Planning Commission proposal for a not-to-exceed cost of twenty-two hundred.
That's what I was gonna ask you, this not-to-exceed.
Yep, not-to-exceed twenty-two hundred.
Well, we have a motion, and we just have to amend it to add the cost.
Oh, okay.
Just add that.
Yeah. Okay, I'm gonna, made a revised motion that we amend the SEC Metro Planning Strategic Planning Session Proposal not-to-exceed twenty-two hundred dollars in cost to the city.
You gonna second that?
Support, yeah.
All right, so now we got that fixed. I got a question. So, I mean, the budget stuff, we're gonna start that eventually pretty quick, so it's gonna kinda coincide with that, so-
That will dovetail out of this.
Exactly. When do you expect, though, in January? Because usually, we kill off the first meeting in January, our normal meeting. I know this is a special, so-
That'll be something that we'll have to come up with the timeframe.
So within the next two meetings, you're gonna give us some type of, some dates or some times?
Yep.
And what we're gonna pick for that? Okay.
I have a question. So the department head survey, is this just asking questions? Is it a form that everybody fills out?
It's something that the county will develop, and they will, in essence, hand out to myself and all of the department heads. It'll be an open-ended question, I'm sure, with information that they'll be looking for. What's your biggest challenges? What do you think needs to be taken care of as a priority in the next couple of years? So it'll be a lot of that kind of stuff. And then what they will do when they get these responses back from everyone, including the commission, is they'll compile and kind of cluster things together and start the discussion based on that feedback.
Anything else?
I will say that I've been involved in strategic planning through, with school districts before, and this price is a phenomenal price. It's ridiculous, so, yeah. So nice job. You searched this out. Very nice.
Anything else? If not, let's have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerry.
All right, on to financial business. I need a motion for the disbursements, including payroll.
I make a motion to approve disbursements, including payroll, the amount of two-hundred-and-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
Support.
Any questions from anybody? Any of the bills? I have one. I know we got into this once before about, it's on page five of eighteen. There's one on there for the contractors where it has the insulated coveralls. And I know, last time I asked about that, there was a whole slew of things that we bought. And I know we're trying to make these better, but this, we're right back to the same issue. You can't tell from this that we're spending over two thousand dollars for coveralls. So if there's any way we can put a little bit more detail on those, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Because I know they bought a lot more than just coveralls. Anything else? Okay, if not, roll call vote.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Burkaman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, we have preliminary financial statements. I need a motion.
Make a motion to the preliminary financial statement to accept it, put it on file.
Need a support?
Support.
Okay, got a motion to support. Any questions? Usually, it's just accept and file. If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City managers report.
Been a busy couple of weeks. First of all, welcome to the new commissioners. Hopefully, this is the beginning of two to four great years, depending upon who's gonna stay on. And I guess next year, or, I'm sorry, two years, we'll have another election, so hopefully, everything will go well. I attended Blue Meat Green, ZBA, the Chamber Annual Meeting, and the Scotts Meeting. Stream Time Live is something that we approved, working with them, to put a webcam in place at the water treatment center, or water treatment plant on the river. And that camera is live. We did post a link on our website. The Chamber has one on theirs as well. We've also posted a link on Facebook. The amount of people and the locations from where they are watching is incredible. So hopefully, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, you can take a look at it. The First Impressions Grant, we're gonna be working on getting our date for the public rollout of the information from that meeting. Looking at the end of January, beginning of February, potentially, as a snow date. So I will have information for you on that at the next meeting. The grant that we applied for, for the recreational multipurpose court, we did get. So thank you to Michelle Goodrich in our office for writing that grant, ten-thousand-dollar grant. So that's something that, we're gonna be working on some of the details and putting together the scheduling information. And hopefully, by summer next year, we will have a lot more courts for people to be able to use over at the King Road Park. The recreational marijuana, I had mentioned that I'd gone to MML training regarding the recreational marijuana laws. With that being passed now, there's gonna be another training session, which I will be attending, to find out some of the details about what to do next. Sixty-one percent of the voters at the election did approve the recreational marijuana here in the community. So that is something to take into consideration when we figure out what we're going to do for the next steps. There is a revenue component. If you do have a facility, any type of facility located in your community, and it's all percentage-based on sales and how much the state gets. So stay tuned for more on that in the future. I have been working with the treasurer. We have started our reporting for the state revenue sharing. We're still waiting on the final numbers from the audit for that, so that we can get that in. It is due to the state December first, so we don't anticipate any issues with meeting that deadline. Hopefully, we'll have it at least a week before. After that, we, in essence, will be working on starting the next year's budget process. Usually, by January is when it goes out to department heads, for them to start taking a look at the budget. With the approval of the strategic planning, that, like I mentioned, is something that's gonna really dovetail into the budget, and we will be working on all of that very shortly. That's all I have.
I got a couple of questions for ya. How's the Safe Routes to Schools sidewalks going?
I don't know if they're going to get everything complete this year.
Because of the weather getting so cold so fast?
Correct. I think they got a little bit behind schedule with some of the front-end issues that we had with the grant money and making the changes for that. And fortunately, the state came through and helped bridge that gap on the grant money, to be able to cover our costs on that. So it's unfortunately one of those things with construction. The timing and weather don't always cooperate, but if it doesn't get done this year, we'll definitely finish it up in the spring.
Next one is, what's going on with the Christmas lights on Parker? And it's kind of a mess. A lot of the ones that were along here are now elsewhere in this area. I know they have trouble because of the sidewalks, but there's a few banners. There's nothing that was here that was here last year. All of it's kinda, and then I guess some of the ones on Broadway aren't working. I don't know if that's just the pole, or if it's our stuff. But Parker looks pretty bad.
Yeah, so with the Safe Routes to School stuff, that has created a little bit of an access problem for some of that work. And then also, the weather, they've been kinda jumping back and forth, so I'm not sure if, they just haven't finished putting everything up yet. I know they were stringing some of the lines across the street, and it just got too windy that day, so they had to stop doing that and come back to that another day. They have not completely finished yet. Not all the equipment, unfortunately, survives every season. So I would expect, unfortunately, that we will see diminishing amounts of decorations as equipment breaks. Believe it was all funded through Tifa. So without funding or someone stepping up to fund Christmas lights, eventually, we will see that diminishing.
I just hope that the ones that used to be along here weren't moved elsewhere and that we're gonna get the leftovers, because that's kinda what it's looking like so far. So let's hope that that gets resolved. And that's it. Anybody else have any questions for the city manager?
Well, it just happened to do with the, you know, if they're guaranteeing what they're pouring now? It's like when they did the 696. They found the contractor, didn't put the steel in deep enough, and they ripped it out. If this fails, or, you know, what they're gonna do with that? Are they guaranteeing it?
Well, with this being a state contract, there are requirements for them going out and certifying that it is built as back. So beyond guaranteeing, I'm not sure really what you mean by guaranteeing. The only thing-
Well, they gotta add chlor right now because of the winter conditions.
And if that's something that the engineers say would have to be done, then they would have to do that.
Okay.
Anything else for Elaine? If not, we're gonna move on to Commissioner Privilege. All right, so we're gonna start different. Dave always starts on this side. We're gonna start on this side.
Just happy to be here.
Well, we're happy to have ya. Anything else?
No.
Okay, Wendy?
Hey, yes, I wanna thank everyone who came out to vote last week and congratulate Jacob and Cheryl, and also to Mike and Ray and Chuck for their campaigns. I do have to agree with Mike. It's a lot of passion. It's a lot of, you know, where we go both ways, and we all think we're, we all have our opinions and our decisions that we have to make, and everybody's not gonna like them. But we all have to work together, and we're all working for one thing, and that's just for Marine City to be the best place it can be. So I think at some point, we're all gonna, we're all gonna meet, and we're all gonna come together, and we're all gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna keep this town rolling and make sure that nobody is being slighted or being given the benefit that others aren't being given. So again, congratulations to everyone, and thank you to everyone that came out. And with that, I think I have a decision to make that I hadn't really made public yet that, and I think it was just assumed that, because I was running, that I was going to take the four-year term. I am gonna take the four-year term. So it looks like we'll be having to appoint somebody for the remainder of the term that I'm in right now. So, so everybody have a great holiday Thanksgiving week, and be safe if you're traveling. If you're going hunting, be safe going up there, and if you're staying here, enjoy it. So, that's it.
Okay, Bill?
Wanna welcome the new commissioners, and wanna say that the twentieth is the parade also.
Next Tuesday.
So everybody will be lined up out there, and Santa Claus will be there. The kids will have a ball, because we always do that with the Rotary Club and have them on the stage. And he passes out the candy and gets their list, so. But otherwise, I just wanna thank everybody for coming on to the council and have a good time and have a good Thanksgiving.
Okay, Cheryl?
I also like to thank all the voters for coming out, and, you know, I wanna kind of reiterate what Wendy was saying as far as, excuse me, moving forward with, you know, continued growth for Marine City. And, you know, we have such a cool town here, and there's so many cool projects coming in. And I'm just very excited to see what the future holds, all of them down the Bluewater area. You know, it's just very cool to see, so I'm happy to be a part of it.
Okay, all right, I got a couple of things. I wanna congratulate the Marine City football team for its district and regional titles. And I wish them all the best luck. I know everybody does. This Saturday, they're gonna be playing Portland in Howell. I think they're having a send-off Saturday morning. I thought, I saw that on Facebook. That last game was a nail-biter. Those kids played their little hearts out. I mean, that was one of the best games I've seen in a long time. It went to double overtime, and it was nuts, but they pulled it off, and they really worked hard. So good luck to them. Also wanna thank our police department. They raised two hundred dollars, and they donated to the Marine City Old Newsboys, so I wanna thank them for that. I wanna remind people, too, I know this fall, we didn't really have a fall. It went from summer to winter. And we have this issue with the leaves, and I'd still like to reiterate, please don't blow them out in the street. That's, can cause you to get a ticket. And when the snow comes around, don't blow that out into the street either, same issue. And don't forget about the parking. That's coming up, what, December first? If you need a parking permit, please get in there to get a parking permit or talk to the city, because starting December first, that takes effect. So, and if somebody does see any issues with the snow or the leaves, who are they calling? You guys at city offices or the PD?
Either.
Either, either or? Okay, just wanna make sure.
We'll route it to the right person.
Okay, and you'll get it routed. All right, and I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving also, and I wanna congratulate everybody. Welcome to the board. It's a new time, a new change. It's gonna be different, okay? So hopefully, everything's gonna move along a lot better here. Still doesn't mean we have a whole lot of money, but I think with everybody that we have, I think things are gonna work out a little bit better. So with that, I will need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Need a support?
Support.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion, needing adjourn.